Eight mile.
Everything.
Two minutes to go.
Mayor, did you say you were moving four up to?
Moving four up to one, or one down.
Okay, and then go down.
I'll make that motion.
We'll get away from Melissa. She's going to get a flyer for the walkathon.
Oh. I could have just pulled it off my wall.
It's locked out of everything.
Would Maximus McGinnis please come to?
Why don't we wait till we start?
I've got something for him.
Okay.
We're going to let Maximus be the honorary mayor of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
That's so cool.
Got to go that way.
We are going to help Maximus get another certificate at the next meeting. To show that he was the honorary mayor of Hazel Park of today.
Go ahead and sit right next to the mayor up there.
Right over here, buddy.
What's that?
Nothing, like everything else. Public, being in public is not very much.
Okay, Brian, we're going to get ready to get started in about 10 seconds.
How are you doing? All right. So when I say? Anytime you're ready. Just smack.
Say, call it order.
Say, call the order.
Call it order.
Like to welcome everybody. Today, we have an honorary mayor with us today, Maximus McGinnis, and we're going to move through the meeting a little bit here. Like to have a roll call. Listen. A roll call. Yes, say yes or no. Here?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Portavlando?
Here.
Councilmember Lucero?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Okay. Approval of the agenda, please.
Say what?
We need an approval of the agenda.
You approve the agenda?
Agenda, yeah, go ahead. Do we have any changes?
Your honor, I move approval of the agenda as presented, with the exception of moving item four in special presentation to one and numbering the rest two, three, four.
Second.
Support, a dissension, hearing none, smack the gavel.
Smack the gavel and say, motion carries.
Motion carries. There you go. So we take item four, we moved it up on special presentations, and we have a special presentation for Maximus McGinnis for your faithful service and contribution to the safety of your fellow classmates at Webb Elementary School. We'd like to thank you. And we have a certificate for you.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Mike DeLecky and the other members of the Hazel Park Lions Club also have something for Max, so if you'd please approach. Mike? So you want to go down with the mayor and?
You got fired already?
You should, you had to come down for the presentation.
Hi.
I've known Max for two years. He's been a safety patrol boy out there, a man out there. He's been keeping everybody safe, and he's very courteous to everybody. He escorts a lot of people and to the, to the school, and he'll, he'll share his umbrella, and, and he's got a lot of friends, and you do a fantastic job of keeping us safe. And according to Ferndale Police, we have the safest intersection of all the Ferndale schools, even though Webb is, is a, Hazel Park school. So we are, we are keeping it safe, and I thank you. So this is from the principal. Maximus McGinnis has earned special recognition for being a responsible and respectable, respectful crossing guard helper for the, this says 2022-23, but you were there for two years, and snow, and rain, and 100 degrees, and you're out there every day. And this is signed by the principal. That's Tossi?
Mr. Tossi.
All right. And through the, from the city and from Hazel Park Lions, we got you a little bit of money to hopefully?
What?
Well, you're not going to Florida, but? So, thank you very much for your service. And one more thing that your principal has said, she has said that you can be in fifth grade all the time you want to be.
Yes!
There you go. You know, you can, you know, you don't have to go to sixth grade. You can be in the fifth grade, okay?
Yes.
Thank you for your service, and we will see you at the parade. Thank you. Thank you. Great job. You can, you can finish out your duties in the audience, or you can come up here with me, either one, whatever you'd like.
I don't know.
Yes, that's where you do it.
Make sure everybody.
We'll be fast. People have, go to a concert.
We'll get to the meeting. Okay, it takes us to item two, proclamation declaring May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Would like to read that one.
Actually, it's Huntington's first.
It's the Huntington's first.
Oh, Huntington, sorry. I missed it.
A proclamation naming May 2023 Huntington's Disease Awareness Month. Whereas Huntington's Disease is a progressive neurodegenerative disorder affecting more than 41,000 symptomatic Americans, while another 200,000 are genetically at risk of inheriting the expanded gene responsible for causing the disease. And whereas, each child of a parent with Huntington's Disease has a 50% chance of inheriting the condition, which can present at earlier ages in successive generations. And whereas, Huntington's Disease typically occurs in midlife between the ages of 30 and 50, although a less common juvenile form can present in childhood or adolescence. And whereas, the average life expectancy of individuals with Huntington's Disease is 10 to 20 years after symptoms begin, and the earlier age of onset is associated with more rapid disease progression. And whereas, since the discovery of the gene that causes Huntington's Disease in 1993, the pace of research has accelerated, and today scientists across the nation are conducting important research into Huntington's Disease, which at present has no effective treatment or cure. And whereas, it is critical to the success of research and support services to raise awareness in the general public and the medical community about Huntington's Disease. Now, therefore, be it known, Michael Webb, mayor, to hereby proclaim May 2023 as Huntington's Disease Awareness Month in the city of Hazel Park.
Thank you, Luke, and I will declare that. And my eyes are still adjusting to my new glasses. I'm sorry. So I'm, it's a little hard to read. And I know this is right to your family here. You have Huntington's Disease.
Yes. My, my father-in-law has Huntington's Disease. Both of his siblings and his parents are happy to say that my wife and son do not carry the gene, but it's entirely possible that other members of the family do, and we're hoping to eliminate the disease at the current generation and make sure that none of our kids carry the gene.
Thank you for reading that. That takes us to the mental health awareness.
Mr. Mayor. City of Hazel Park proclamation declaring May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas, in recent decades, mental health has gained increasing recognition as being vitally important not only for the well-being of individuals, but also for that of families and communities. And whereas, one in five adults in the U.S. has experienced mental illness, and that number is even higher, one in three, among young adults aged 18 to 25. And whereas, mental illnesses are biologically based brain disorders that cannot be overcome through willpower and are not related to a defect in a person's character or intelligence. And whereas, mental health recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling a person with mental illness to live in a community of his or her choice while striving to achieve his or her full potential in life. And whereas, mental health recovery not only benefits individuals with mental health disorders by focusing on their ability to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, but also enriches the culture of their communities. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Michael Webb, mayor of the city of Hazel Park, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, does hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Hazel Park, and calls upon all citizens and institutions to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses, as well as the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses in order to promote recovery.
Thank you, sir, and therefore proclaim. And it takes us to the declaring the first Friday in June to be Gun Violence Awareness Day.
That's me. This proclamation declares first Friday in June to be Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Hazel Park, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas, every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are more than 21,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas, in Michigan has 1,270 gun deaths per year with a rate of 14.6 deaths per 100,000 people, Michigan has the 22nd highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas, protecting public safety in the communities they serve is among a council member's highest responsibilities. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizen goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people that shouldn't have them. And whereas, the pandemic facing America has drastically, excuse me, impacted communities and individuals sheltering in place, which may result in situations where access to firearms results in increased risk to intimate partner violence, gun deaths, suicide by gun, and unintentional shootings. Whereas, in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the presidential inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 26th birthday. And whereas, to honor Hadia and the more, sorry, more than 100 Americans who lives are cut short every day and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 2nd, 2023, the first Friday in June, as the 12th National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange in, sorry, wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd, the first Friday in June in 2023, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 22nd, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Hazel Park declares the first Friday in June, June 2nd, 2023, to be Gun Violence Awareness Day. We encourage all citizens to support their community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
Subwoofer, thank you. About the gun violence? Have you up a public discussion? Just give, just give us a second. We'll be right there, right after the budget, okay? Yeah, we got to do a budget. The fun stuff. All the fun stuff we got to do. Got the budget part here. Take us down to budget and truth and taxation. I'd like to open up a public hearing. If anyone has any comments about the current budget which we are looking at from 2023 to 2024. Sure, we all read it online.
They'll be attached afterwards.
I'll take us, close the public hearing. Take it to the 2023-24 City Hazel Park Budget.
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests approval of this budget. I want to thank Lacy Christiansen, deputy city manager slash finance director, for her really hard work on this document. It took many hours of calculations, and she did a great job with this. So a big thank you to her and to the department heads as well, who provided information. And we're pleased to present a balanced budget. Proud of this. But again, there's a lot of things happening in Lansing. Things are unsettled. So no matter what, we're committed to making good and responsible decisions about the future to chart a successful course for Hazel Park, no matter what happens in Washington, Lansing, or with the national economy.
All right. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Your honor, with a tremendous amount of appreciation, gratitude, I move approval of the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 city budget.
Support.
Second.
More discussion, dissension, hearing none. We have a budget for 2023 and 2024. Thank you, counsel. These are two civic announcements. Anyone in the audience, any civic announcements for the future? Any civic announcements from?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two civic announcements. First civic announcement is the pride flag raising. We're going to do that at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, June 3rd. Mark your calendars. And then the For Bruce Walkathon to raise money for pancreatic cancer in honor of our city attorney, Melissa Schwartz, her late husband. Bruce fought a very valiant battle against this horrific killer disease, and because the sacrifices that he made and the testing that he underwent, his DNA is currently being used across the planet to help develop cures for this terrible malady. So I hope that everyone comes out, and that is on Saturday, June 10th, from 11:30 to 2:00 p.m. at the Hazel Park High School Athletic Track. So please make plans to be at these two important events. Thank you. That's all that I have.
Thank you. I thought I saw a hand stick up in the audience. One up?
Thank you. My name is Tina Cardill. I'm a Hazel Park resident since 1966, and I just wanted to make a comment about the end gun violence in Michigan. I'm a member of the Episcopal Church, and our bishop, Dr. Perry, is a member of the governor's select committee that's working on this. And so through stuff that's come filtered down, I found out not only are there many chapters in Michigan that you can attend meetings on, either by Zoom or in person, to get involved in this. And I was going to mention about wearing orange, but thank you, thank you, it was part of your proclamation. So, and it's sort of cool because that is happening the same weekend we're having our citywide garage sale. If you're interested in just looking up Wear Orange online, you can get the information on getting t-shirts. I just ordered mine two days ago to, so I can wear it during garage sale weekend. And also, if you're not interested in a t-shirt, they've got totes, they've got hats, and it's Moms Against Gun Violence that are also a big part of that, and it's been going on for 10 years. So it is happening in our community. There's meetings in, over in St. Clair Shores. The one I'm going to is in Southfield on 12 Mile Road at St. David's Church on the 17th of May at 7:00 p.m. So if you're interested in, you know?
Please speak into the microphone.
Some action or moving ahead on it, or just finding out more about what's happening in your own neighborhood, just take a look at that website, and you can go around from there.
And since you're here, with the Lions Club doing the Beer Tent Memorial Weekend, please speak into the microphone so we can put, everybody can hear.
Okay, sure. Yeah, we will be staffing them Beer Tent again this year. This is where we make all our volunteer collected donations that we get from that and the money we raise that we hopefully turn around and goes back into the city and also statewide charities that we support through our governor. We hope to see everybody there. We'll be there starting Friday this year rather than Thursday, and come out and have some fun and listen to some good music and support the city. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Thank you for all you do for the community. And a big thank you to the other members of the Lions Club, too, for all that they do.
And then we'll close the civic announcements, public discussion. Anyone from the public wishing to come up and speak about any particular topic they want? Seeing no one, we'll close public discussion. Consent agenda one through 11. Counsel, what would be your wish to adopt?
Your honor, I move approval of the consent agenda items one through 11.
Support. Discussion. Anyone? Anybody here from the businesses? Anyone here from 1059 East Nine Mile EZ RX LLC, 23375 Dequender Flex Collision, 941951 East Nine Mile Sports and More? Sports and More. And 1559 East Eight Mile Black Ace Hookah.
I actually had a question for the administration. On the business license for Black Ace Hookah, it says that they would be doing business as a hookah lounge, but then on the business application, it said something about also hydroponics? Is it, is it hydroponics or is it a hookah lounge?
It's just purely for retail stuff, so it's not a hookah lounge. They didn't apply for hydroponics. They applied basically just to get back to the store.
So the application that I have is, and I noticed it because it was the same beginning language as the mushroom, the spores and more. So it says it's a hydroponic supply store with ours, and then it says the application was approved. So is this, is it just the incorrect information on the application that we received?
Please come up. Jim, please come up.
I don't see what you're talking about.
Yeah, they had applied for their special land use to basically just sell at retail hookah products.
On the application for Black Ace Hookah, when you say, when you read the background information, it says this business license application was originally submitted April 20th, 2023. It's a hydroponics and supply store with ours.
Maybe it's just a typo with the H from hookah.
Well, it's very similar language, but it's different information than the actual hydroponic store. So I wanted to make sure that we are approving this for what it, can we table this? Because I'm concerned that we have incorrect information, and I don't want to approve incorrect information.
Yeah, I can't speak to that document specifically.
The application says tobacco sales and hookah lounge.
Yeah.
Narrative you guys put up here for us is different, says hydroponic.
Yeah, again, I will probably have to?
This isn't legal. This isn't legal.
Yell at the staff once again about the dangers of legacy documents if you?
And it's not even the same information as the other one, like it's ours and everything. So they adjusted this.
Copy and paste.
Yeah, I think that's what it is. I think it's okay to approve it based upon the application itself and the information based on the application.
Okay, that's our attorney's legal opinion. I just don't want us to get in trouble.
Yeah, you're fine.
The record is clear that the council is only evaluating based on the City of Hazel Park application for business license dated 4/20/23, signed by T.R.A.V.E.N.E. Haley, and not the memo that is submitted by the administration.
And just make sure the approval for the consent agenda motion includes that, and we'll be all set.
Thanks.
Good.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. I appreciate it.
And just for the edification of everyone out there, we are paving with the consent agenda West Coy Avenue from Lennox to South Chrysler Drive. That's also in that as well.
That's good news.
We have a motion. It's passed. No dissension. Discussion's over. That takes us down to administrative reports. Anyone have any other administrative reports?
No administrative reports today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, boards and commissions. I have this one here. It's a reappointment to David Martina, Jake Parcell, Leetan Watson, Barbara Winter, Lisa Crouch, Doug Passacarnas, Ken Muha, Ron Nagy, and Anya Ritt to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals as presented.
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests those appointments be renewed.
That is done. And we also want to appoint Adam Duke to the Main Street Hazel Park, Samantha Martin to the Bupification Commission, Brandon Frant to the Arts Council.
Ross.
Ross, sorry, mine says, kind of messed up there.
You got those new glasses. It's all right.
Yeah, it's tough. It is tough.
And Felicia Tolbert.
To the Arts Council as well. And that is done as well. And takes us down to old business. Any old business? We see none. No new business. Any council member have any new business they want to bring up for discussion or for the future? Okay, no new business communications from department heads. Alyssa?
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Any other department heads? Don't jump at once. Okay, I'll take it down to the city attorneys. Done. And city manager?
Mr. Mayor, even though Michigan's system of municipal finance remains fundamentally broken, we're pleased to present you with a balanced budget that will continue to provide great services to the city of Hazel Park, and hopefully this year, we will be able to do some road maintenance projects in some of our local streets and?
Okay, takes us to communications from Alyssa Sullivan.
Oh, hey.
I always pick you.
That's all right. I want to thank everybody for coming out today. I want to re-congratulate our young gentleman over here. Thanks for the hard work you do, helping keep, keep people safe. It's a really important job. I also want to remind people, as Tina Cardell came up and spoke about, wearorange.com is a website you can go to if you're interested in getting more involved in helping prevent gun violence in the state of Michigan and across the country. I also wanted to remind people, because this is Mental Health Awareness Month, you can dial 988, similar to dialing 911, if you're suffering or someone you know is suffering a mental health crisis. And also wanted to remind people that our, our police department always has free gun locks. You can pick those up at any time, no questions asked, 24/7. Just walk right into the main lobby and ask for a free gun lock. I want to remind people to stay safe, and I want to wish my mom a Happy Mother's Day this upcoming Sunday. So, and my dad a Happy Birthday, because his birthday is this month, and then next month I get the flip. I get mom's birthday, dad's Father's Day. So that's it. Everybody stay safe and be nice to your mom.
Any Lucero? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just asking everybody to watch out for the bicyclists out there. This is the second time in a week that I've seen this young man get a, an accommodation and award. How you doing? Way to go, Max. Way to go, Maximus. The Hazel Park Casual Bike Club that I always comment about on Facebook is looking for some new leaders. The two original guys, John and David of Life Happens. So Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. That's coming up. Hope to see everybody at the Memorial Day Festival. We probably won't have a meeting until then, right? Think we'll have one more.
No, I'm, I'm thinking we're not going to probably need a second meeting. I think Luke is going to talk a little bit about Memorial Day in his closing comments because I gave him a little bit of information. But just to remind everybody, that is coming up, Memorial Day weekend this year, we're not starting the carnival until Friday, and it will go Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. The parade will start at the junior high. This year, again, like it did last year, it's just too difficult for everyone to make the walk and to block off all those streets for safety reasons. So?
What time does the parade start?
10.
10 o'clock.
And we'll have a memorial service here at nine at City Hall. And the grand marshal this year, the special grand marshal will be Nick Dragon, who is a decorated Vietnam veteran and has served in our Mobile Communications Support Unit with the Police Department since 1973. 50 years of service.
Amazing.
On top of his military service. So he will be our grand marshal. This will be the first time in 50 years that he hasn't worked the parade as an MCSU member.
Thank you. I'll also, now wasn't done. That's all right. We needed the information. I also want to wish happy birthday to my Cara, my daughter Cara, 30-something years old. And so on that note, if you love somebody, tell them, if you have kids, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Thanks for coming out. Thank you. Mayor Portav?
This one's me. Thank you to Lacy and all the city staff. A budget is a Herculean undertaking. The fact that they're able to not only complete it, but to balance it every year is just a monumental task. So thank you to the entire city staff. About a year ago around this time, we were sort of reeling after a lot of really insane incidents at the Memorial Day Fair. A lot of violence, a couple early closures. So we had asked the city administration to, to make some changes for this year, and I'm really proud to say that they followed through in flying colors. So this year, attendees must have a wristband to access the fair. So this year, attendees must have a wristband to access the fair and beer tent and remain on premises. Non-writing supervising parents or guardians will be admitted for free. Refreshments, beer tent wristbands are free to adults over 21 years of age. All minors must be supervised by a parent or guardian after 7:00 p.m. And all children under 12 years of age must be supervised at all times. Individuals violating festival rules will be asked to leave and may be prosecuted. No refunds and no face coverings are allowed except for religious or approved medical purposes. I would also like to thank the city for indulging my Huntington's Disease proclamation. Really means a lot to me and my family. Happy first Mother's Day to my wife. Happy 34th Mother's Day to my mother. And happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome Mayor Maximus here to open and make a comment. Luke, would you give my microphone there? Do you have any comments for today, sir?
What?
Do you have any comments to the audience for today? And being mayor, say thank you.
I forgot what to say.
Say Happy Mother's Day to your mother.
Thank you, Mom.
He was making mine whole.
That's right.
Happy Mother's Day.
You did a wonderful job. Thank you. Appreciate it. Keeping it safe and keeping an eye on everybody and all your fellow students out there. I think it's a very important job. I was also a safety. I think a lot of us, young men and ladies, were safeties at one point in our lives. And while we were in school, at one time we were as small as you. But I think that it takes a lot of, it takes a lot for everyone to have a little bit of love and consideration for their fellow man, to be able to take and step out and be protecting others. That's a big goal. We have officers here. We have police officers doing it every day. We have firefighters doing it as well. And we have the teachers as well in the schools training and helping grow young minds. And it's wonderful that we can move and have young men like you today showing an example for other young students out there the way of the future. And you might wind up like a city manager here one day. Who knows? But it actually pays more.
He wants to be a scientist and that'll pay even more. So.
But anyway, I want to say.
Sanity.
I want to, I want us to have Mike Delicki have a couple of comments here.
Well, Max jumps in front of the people.
Sub up their mic, please.
Max jumps in front of the people. They have to stand at a certain line. You're not crossing that line. And even when he's, he takes the day off, they stand right there. And he does a fantastic job. And we thank you for that, Sir Max.
I'd like to thank Maximus for being mayor for today. Thank you. I got to get the big question out there. This is your job right here. Hold us. Ask the council for a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn. Support.
Motion accepted. There we go. Thank you for coming out. We had a wonderful time.
Way to go, man.
Congratulations, Max.